Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Whitman Hansen Regional School Committee at 6:30 on February 28th, 2024. If I could have everyone stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would you please remain standing for a moment of silence for Ron LaBretton? He's a former teacher, assistant principal, principal, assistant superintendent of many of the schools in this district, and he passed away this past weekend. Thank you. George, do I have any public comment?
I do.
Rosemary, would you like to come up, please?
Thank you. Today, I spoke to a friend of mine, and she-
Rosemary, just your name.
Oh, my name is Rosemary Conley. I thought you read that off. Rosemary Conley, 405 Franklin Street. I'm also a Finance Committee member. One of the things I'd like people to consider, and I had this conversation with a school committee member over in Brockton, and we know they're having a lot of problems over there, and she's a mental health professional and nurse. And one of the things that happened over there, not the whole budget, was that a lot of people tried to make a financially responsible move and, you know, not create a financial shift and pull back from the ESER money. But what wasn't considered was dysregulation, that COVID would have a psychological effect on children beyond the money that the state was allocating for that effect. I think that probably should be talked to at the state level, that the cost of COVID is probably more than what we budgeted for, than what we got aid for, and that-
Yes.
-the risks of pulling back too early, we can kind of see some of those in Brockton. So when we're considering this budget, consider that there are financial guidelines, but there's also the real need to make sure that these kids are safe and have what they need. So please balance that, and thank you so much for the work you do.
Thank you, Rosemary. Okay. Legislative update with Senator Brady, Representative Sullivan. Come on up and say hey.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Senator.
Senator Mike Brady, we have Representative Sullivan.
Right behind you.
So before we start, I'd like to just listen to you guys, and I know you gave us a letter and so forth, but anything you'd like to say before we get started, go right ahead.
So, before, so I wrote, Senator, on behalf of the school committee at our last meeting, they asked me to write you and Rep. Sullivan and Rep. DeCoste a letter about unfunded and underfunded mandates that we have to live by. And being the regional school district that we are, we rely on the state pretty heavily, and when that underfunded mandate comes in, more underfunded than we anticipate, it directly affects service. I stated a few of those as far as transportation, as far as circuit breaker, a lot around special education, and I would just ask, on behalf of myself and the committee, to really legislate that we fully fund those mandates, and that changes the whole dynamic of how I plan a budget and what happens to the taxpayers in both towns. Last year, we overestimated transportation reimbursement. It came in lower than we had expected, which led to removing some staff prior to the beginning of the school year. It affected students, and we hope that with your support at the legislature that those mandates would be fully funded or close to fully funded as they have been in the past.
Okay. Anyone else?
Senator Brady, Representative Sullivan, thank you for coming very much. Appreciate seeing you and knowing your concerns. Speaking only for myself, because I can't speak for a committee, you know, I know the hard position that you folks are in, you know, where the state made certain anticipations and projections of revenue. Those aren't being hit. Matter of fact, they adjusted them, and the adjustments aren't being hit.
Uh huh.
You know, so, you know, sort of get that. At the same time, we're charged with educating children. Our towns have a finite amount of money that you can raise due to Proposition 2 and 1/2. So the hands are somewhat tied. It's of my opinion, and this is a personal opinion, that one department should not be taken away from another, as long as everyone's treated equally.
She agrees.
It's not up to the schools to say, "Well, you need 10 less cops," because we all know how dangerous policing has gotten recently. Same thing with firefighters. You know, they run a medical service now, but, you know, their budgets are important. So the town elders, and I know we have at least one person, select person in the crowd there, selectman in the crowd, we're still called that today. So, you know, they're charged with making recommendations at town meeting for a budget. This committee and the superintendent is charged with putting forward a budget, and due to the nature of a regional school district, it's not a 2 and 1/2 percent increase, it's up to a 5 percent increase in our assessment. But to even try and live within that, especially when you have other districts and other folks, you know, granted that we can't be in, how do I say it, in R. of Newton, you know, our teachers work hard and they deserve what they get paid, and they deserve to be able to live a lifestyle, you know, that with inflation, et cetera, is not impacted as well. It's very, very difficult. I would ask you to fight for every penny you can get for us. It would just go so far. I know you'll do your best, and that's all we could expect and ask this time.
Thank you, and if I may, we're fortunate, because Rep. Sullivan and myself have a great relationship, and we work well together, and she advocates in the House side, and I advocate in the Senate side. Unfortunately, we did lose another Representative, Josh Coller, who now works for the governor. That's going to be an open seat till the end of the year. There is an election for that coming up. They won't be sworn until January, but anything we can do, and I know I can't speak for Rep. Sullivan, but we're both going to advocate on behalf of whatever we can do. And I know sometimes these regional schools do get shortchanged, especially with regional transportation, everything else. So anything we can move forward and try to fund amendments to the budget, if you feel they're not adequate, I'm happy to support them. I can speak for Rep. Sullivan, I'm sure she is, and one thing that's going to be tough is we have to fully fund what's recommended in Chapter 70 money in the suit and opportunity for the fair share amendment, but some districts that have a different situation with population gets more than Whitman Hansen, obviously. It's a smaller community. But we're going to do everything we can, and in the meantime, while the budget's going to the governor produces her budget, it goes through the House and then it goes to the Senate. But anything we can help with, to help with that, please let us know, and we'll advocate on your behalf.
I don't think I'm shy.
No, no, and you've been great, but, and I know we sometimes have been able to increase things, but not enough where we like it, and the unfortunate thing at the state level, the past four months, revenue's been down. So you're not going to get anything less, because that's committed from the state level in the leadership, but we'll try to get some things done to get a little more if we can. And again, you know, big-ticket items like house sales are through the roof at the Commonwealth, but the other things, washers, dryers, cars, those sales are down, and the stock market is fluctuating. One day, people are making a ton, and then the next day, it crashes. So revenue's been jumping on that end, too, but we're trying to be creative to get more revenue into the Commonwealth where we can, so we can get more revenue to the cities and towns that we represent. So, and I'll pass it on to Rep. Sullivan.
Thank you, Senator. I do want to say, Rep. DeCoste, who is also representing a portion of Hanson, I believe he has one precinct, unfortunately had a personal appointment that he had to make tonight and wasn't able to come. I think he was going to attempt to, but unfortunately can't be here. As far as Fred, your ass, right, and also the superintendent, you have been at many of meetings, I think, with all the other superintendents in the southeast area, and I know we've always advocated as far as the special education. I know that's a big budget item on your budget, and it's stuff that you have to by law address. And I know personally, Senator Brady as well, and even Rep. DeCoste, we do advocate for fully funding the mandates here, especially our regional school district. Unfunded or underfunded mandates is not fair to the towns, and we fully understand that. That is why sometimes you may see some of us take a position on legislation, because we don't know where those funds are going to come from. And the scary thought is, is putting it back on you guys to have to make those hard decisions on where certain funds go, or do you cut a teacher? Do you cut a bus? Do you cut where you have to make those cuts because of these other, either unfunded or underfunded mandates? So we're always keeping a close eye on that. I'm almost hard-pressed to guarantee you a certain amount of money that you're going to get right now, because it is scary. Like Senator Brady said, revenue has been down from the projected numbers. They've even had to go back in and re-project those numbers, and it's even down from there. So the scary part is it may be down from even the numbers they're projecting now. And so I don't want to give you false hope in any way, shape, or form. We're actually being, I don't know if Senator Brady has been told, but we're very cautious on what we're asking for outside sections as far as our local communities, because we don't know if we're even going to get them this year, and that's a scary thought as well. So if I had to pick between an extra 20 grand for a small project in the town or making sure some of these mandates are funded, I'd rather pick these mandates be funded and see that our students aren't left behind, and that we have the resources here in the school district and across, you know, across my school districts, the funding that they need in order to maintain. And I do apologize, my daughter is very chatty today.
She's awesome. It's like, "Let's go, Mom, come on."
So she's pretty much telling me to, like, "Okay, stop talking and answer any questions you guys might have."
And to add, the other thing is, when the federal money came in during the heat of COVID, in the APFA money, that's gone, you know, some towns were right on the ball, applying for the money, get their paperwork in on time, and they got the money back. And thank God that the Plymouth County League, they actually distributed the money faster than the other money that went directly to the governor's office would have been, because they were on the ball getting those applications.
And I think that's an important fact.
Fred, we have other people who want to speak.
I was just going to bring up real quick ESER funds and how they're impacting-
Do you want to go in order?
...some odd thousand of our budget.
Chris, that was Matt.
Yeah, thanks. I just, for people here tonight and folks listening at home, maybe you could give us some examples of how you do advocate for, you know, funding for education?
Yeah, so right now, we have like a listening tour across the Commonwealth with Ways and Means. I sit on Ways and Means, I believe Senator Brady as well sits on Ways and Means. So we definitely have a different perspective on how the budget process goes. It's a very lengthy process that both the chairman on the House side and the chairman on the Senate side take, and they take it seriously. So they listen to each department, each executive office, to hear what their asks are. And so we, of course, in amongst the listening tour, we always advocate for local aid. We advocate for the increase of local aid, also with Chapter 70, Chapter 90, funding that really impacts our local communities, you know, the unrestricted general fund. So from my side, we always have these meetings with either our chairman, or even in my party, we have a minority ranking member, I have those conversations with him, we have it amongst our caucus, and we're constantly talking about, you know, to fully fund. A lot of my colleagues have regional school districts, so it's advocating for the fully funding of regional transportation, the special education, you know, where we know that you're hitting hard on your budget line items, that's where we have those conversations, either amongst the caucus, amongst the whole entire membership, or with the chairman himself. So that's how we advocate. Obviously, we encourage our local community and our constituents, like yourselves, even the students, to reach out to either the chairman or other members on those decision boards, whether it be the whole Ways and Means Committee, and say why it would impact them to have more money spent in this area. But that's how I advocate. I don't know, Mike.
Yeah, similar. And then we also are allowed to have some earmarks or amendments to the budget, which we all advocate, and every community may have a wish list of amendments. We usually are limited to how much we can spend in our earmark amendments. In the past, because the Commonwealth had a bigger surplus, we always get more money for these amendments. And this year, because it has been a downturn in the economy, in the past four months, revenue has been down, we may not be able to get as many amendments that we used to get. You know, the good news is the Commonwealth had a surplus years ago, it was called the so-called rainy day account, and it's like you or I have in our own savings account, so we're able to still fund things, so we didn't have to make too many cuts on these things. But the extra things that we usually get, we're in fear of, we may not get everything we want for these extra additional earmarks. And as a representative mentioned, not just Representative Sullivan, myself, for this area, and Representative DeCoste, but these other communities that have regional school districts as well, there's strength in numbers. So anybody here can, and anybody from the audience, too, can write letters or any correspondence or emails. I know not everybody can go into Boston or go to these hearings that we have. We have Ways and Means hearings everywhere in the Commonwealth to try to make it accessible to people, but most people work during the day, they're working schedule, sometimes they're working two or three jobs. So you can always email us at our offices, or send correspondence or phone calls, but to email the leadership, which is the chair of Ways and Means, and the House and the Senate, and then the Speaker of the House and the Senate President, because the more, the merrier. And those people are making, we're going to advocate on your behalf, but the more, the merrier, we can get more people in these other communities that have regional schools. That helps to get strength, because the old cliche, there's strength in numbers.
Sure. Thank you.
And the squeaky wheel, right, always gets oil. And then also, too, I know Senator Brady, as well as myself, we always keep a close eye on grants and funding in that way, and anytime we get information into our office, I'm quickly there to share it with the town administrator, or with your superintendent as well, just to see if it's something that would be pertaining to this community.
Okay. Steve, you had a question?
Yeah. And thank you both for being here. It's good to see you both. Senator Brady, you mentioned the ESER funds. This young lady sitting in the middle of these two gentlemen has turned this district right side up with, she's our director for MTSS.
Thanks, Steve.
She has just done a superb job, our coaches, everything, but it was all related to ESER. If we go outside of this, our committee here, we might hear from other town leaders that, "Well, you know, maybe you should have been more cautious." Well, it has an end date, and we're all very aware of that. In Plymouth County, Jared, Sandy, and I'm already forgetting the other person's name, they did a wonderful job handling that $90 million, getting it out to us. But we can't open the doors without her. I guarantee it. The coaching, her name's Nicole, by the way. She goes by Nikki.
Hi, Nikki.
I'm sorry. But she has been.
Doctor Nikki.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. And I know Ms. Conley mentioned it earlier on, she always has her eyes and ears open when it comes to budget things on behalf of the town of Whitman. So it's just, it's amazing what you see. These four students here, I'm sure they're the pinnacle of their groups, but you know what? They want the others to come along with them. They don't want to leave them behind.
Okay. Fred?
And one thing, I know, like I mentioned, everyone's scheduled busy, but if anyone ever wants to come on the state, it's a people's house, it's not ours. So you're more than welcome, the students, you're more than welcome to come, and we'd be honored to have you there, because even just to visit the state, sometimes we have students, and Rep. Sullivan and myself will invite different students from our district, and we have students from other districts. Plus, we can brag a bunch, or two or three, but we'd be honored if you ever want to come in there with your family, so.
I mean, the superintendent knows, I typically take interns from the school, so if you're ever looking for something like that.
Whitman Hansen's been well represented.
Yes, yes, trying to.
Couple of years ago, I'll tell you, I had two interns, one's going to Boston College, now one's going to Harvard, and they're much smaller than I am.
Whereas ESER, you know, it puts us over 800,000, just the ESER monies as a whole in our budget this year. And I understand ESER is a federal program. Do you guys have any pull with our federal?
I mean, we have a close working relationship with the federal delegation, but-
The tough part, as we hear in the media, unfortunately, they can't get their thing together with funding, whether they're going to fund Ukraine or Israel, or what they're going to do with the border, and that's tying everything up, because we do have a good relationship with our local congressional and Senate colleagues, and we will advocate with them, and they try to do what they can, but it's tough with the rest of the country, because there's so much paddling. That's the one good thing in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, whether we're Republicans or Democrats, we tend to get along very well in the Commonwealth. I don't, and I'm a Democrat, I don't even get along with some of my Democratic colleagues, but we come to a calm consensus, because like anything in life, you've got to come to a common consensus, or you'll never get anything done. And that's unfortunate, what we see at Washington's level, because it was never like this before. You know, you had people on both sides, and they might have went out afterwards and had a coffee or a beer, and they get a common consensus and get things done, and unfortunately, it's not happening in Washington.
I think the most important thing to stress, though, is ESER funds were great.
Yeah.
But the job isn't done.
No.
And that's the scary part. You know, so, I mean, our budgets, and I'm sure we'll be discussing it over the next weeks, but it's in trouble. And part of it is, because we did what was needed, being fully cognizant, or at least administration was cognizant, of the end date, but now that it's ending, you know, how do you do? How do you deal with it? You know, do you take away those programs, or do you try and milk them in? Becomes tough.
Well, we thank you both for being here tonight and listening and hearing us complain, unfortunately, but we know that you do listen, and we hope you take it to your colleagues and try to help us out, if you can.
And I'm sure, you know, both of our offices are always open, so you are the experts in the fields down in the districts down here, so please, anything you hear out there, any ideas, you know, there is a lot of grants, as Rep. Sullivan mentioned, but sometimes there's thousands. If we don't hear about it, and you may hear of it locally, don't hesitate to contact us, because as you know, there's, and this is for everybody in the audience, too, there's thousands and thousands of bills that get filed every year. Some don't see the light today, and some, we spend millions of dollars on lights or electricity or whatever, and they get passed, and it's unfortunate, and to us, it may be a common sense, something easy, and it gets through the cracks, and we've got to stay on top of these things. So anything that you guys hear, please keep in contact with us. And again, as we go through the budget process, and this goes to anybody in the audience, too, that, you know, keep in contact, because as we mentioned, there's strength in numbers, and as Rep. Sullivan mentioned, the squeaky wheel gets aggrieved, so if we can stay on it, that helps everyone.
Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Student advisory.
Thanks, Cap.
Okay. The next that got omitted from the agenda, okay, is our student advisory, accidentally omitted. So we didn't do it on purpose, you were on originally, but when we retyped, it got admitted.
So you're up, Brian.
So you guys are up.
You're the tech guy.
I'll put bridges.
How about that?
Very nice. She pulled it up pretty fast.
Well, while we get that back, we are part of the Whitman Hansen School Committee. My name's Maddie Morris.
I'm Kayla Dawson.
I'm Gianna Ruggiero.
I'm Veronica Cudio.
Okay. So we're going to be talking about five main ideas today, and so we want to go over the Whitman Hansen middle overview, extracurricular possibilities, class structure, and language opportunities, and upcoming ideas that we have.
All right. Overall, we went to the Whitman Middle Schools, both of them, and talked about what they liked and what they disliked. Overall, we found that wind block, which we know is a non-negotiable, was disliked. So one suggestion that we had is just changing that up just a bit, and we'll go over that in a little bit. Offering languages within the middle schools, which not only helps out the middle school students, but as well as high school students. Larger times between classes within the middle schools, and guidance counselor availability. One thing that we learned when we went to visit the middle schools is that many kids feel as though they don't have any after-school opportunities. And from going to the middle schools ourselves, we know that's true. From when we visited Hanson Middle School a few months ago, we realized that Whitman Middle had the opportunity to play scholastic basketball after school, and Hanson Middle does not. And many kids had their own opinions on that, but scholastic basketball is something that's really wanted and encouraged at Hanson Middle, and many students felt that, like, they want to do something after school, they want to hang out with their friends, and something other than a learning environment, something where they can do and play sports, something that they love. So I know that clubs and stuff isn't really in our jurisdiction, but we want more, like, funding for extra, like, after-school activities, just so they can do something and get together, and whether it be sports or something else. Like, I know we have culinary at the high school, and I know that one of the middle schools did a culinary activity over a break. So if we can, like, implement something like that in the middle schools, I think the kids would really like that.
So this was about the wind block after going to both schools. We already met with Dr. Jones, and we were able to hear about the wind block coming to the high school next year, and we all agreed it sounded beneficial, and it was a lot better than what the middle schools described it as. But hearing how their wind is, it was not like what the high school was planned at all, and we were wondering, could we fix or switch the structures of the middle school winds to be more similar like the high school ones, or switch in a more beneficial way, because it was very disliked. So could you, do you mind going to the next slide just to get some? Thank you. So in the Whitman and Hanson Middle School winds, there's no time for makeup or homework. In the past few years, they had power block and extensions, and kids were allowed to, but not anymore. Students aren't allowed to leave the classrooms to check with teachers or anything. In past years, they had that opportunity, but that was taken away, too. For ELA and math wind blocks, students get assigned work based off their I-ready score, but if you're in a history or science wind block, teachers now are assigning work, too, so their free time got taken away, even though they had a good I-ready score. And then teachers and students were both not loving it, especially now that home room got taken away as well. So they said there was really no time for any break, any homework, any time to go see a teacher, even just a little down break. I mean, I know some kids do have trouble sitting straight for six hours, and when I was in sixth grade, I enjoyed extension a lot. We did do like a quick, like, vote in class, and 23 out of 25 kids preferred extension over the wind block. But I bet if the wind block at the middle schools were more like the high school, I'm sure that number would be different. And we even asked, like, some kids, "How would you describe it?" And most of them were negative, saying it was pointless, or they feel like they were not benefiting from it. I have a sister in middle school, and she was also talking about it, saying they just, she was in a science one, because her I-ready scores were good, and she says they do research projects, but she wishes she had that extension time to do her homework or go see a teacher. She has apps and work, so they just wish that the structure was different, or they included more features of the extension, or that extra end at the power block to do homework that they lost the last year.
We also heard back a lot about language and bringing Spanish back. Some suggestions, offerings, like probably volunteer help from students here at the high school who are learning a language, because we have literally almost 1,000 students, so I'm probably, a good handful could make it out to the middle schools and help them, as an offering as an after-school opportunity. And including, we could also include it as a club, we could bring a parent or aide-
And then, just upcoming things, we talked to Mr. Mao and we were able to, next, I think next week, we're going to start doing the suggestion locker, only because a lot of the requests we felt that we could help with and we either knew more about or we feel like we'd be able to communicate better. So, we'll be taking over that next week. And we also were thinking about, one of our future goals is to get the middle schools to provide a suggestion locker and even be able to work with them a little bit and kind of bounce ideas off each other. But we feel that was very, like, beneficial at our school, so we think it'd be a good addition to each middle school as well. But that was our slide. Any questions or anything?
Sure. Well, I just want to thank you and it's real, I know that that was one of your plans to go to the middle schools, and I'm glad to see that you went there and you, you know, brought up some really good points of things that we've been talking about too that we'd like to add, and then we have a budget. And that kind of, you know, strained us in here. But, you know, we really appreciate that you did that and taking the time to go visit with the other students, not just the high school. I think that's really important for you ladies that you do that and keep going, keep going with it. Thank you. Michelle?
Thank you, guys. I just want to thank you for highlighting the win program at the middle school. I do have a middle schooler. It really does need some work, so I appreciate you guys taking the time to really explain and highlight the what's working and what's not. So, thank you for all that research. It was very well presented.
Anybody else? Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, we have Mr. Evans doing presentation.
I'm glad you didn't kick him off the agenda.
I know, he would have yelled at me.
He wouldn't have it.
I want to thank you all for inviting me and giving me the time to talk tonight. I'm not a techie like these young ladies are, but I did provide, I hope, some backup information that you might be able to follow along, maybe had a chance to read before. I'm going to try to follow my script because otherwise I'll be all over the place. I want to thank Superintendent Simon-Ackley, the administrative team, Chairman Woman at Stafford, and all the school committee members for taking the time for this. The first idea of Freedom Team really germinated in March of 2023, which is a year ago. And it all began when I watched a TED Talk. It was TED Natick and the fellow that was speaking was Jamil Adams. He was dynamic, he was genuine, he was passionate, and he was convincing. And since that time, I have spent a year meeting with him, meeting with other folks, and I want to give credit to your superintendent, who's given me a lot of his time and advice, and also to Nicole, because she's helped me with some of the students and particularly Brianna. Brianna is a superstar. And also Cody Roberts. And young ladies, I thank you. I think it's important that you know why I want to have a Freedom Team. It's not that there's a crying need, but there is a need, and there's a need everywhere. I want to take a few minutes to give you a snapshot, what the Freedom Team looks like. I also hope that those who may be interested in helping out would contact me at a future date. Let me tell you what the Freedom Team is not. It's not political, it's not partisan. That's the most important thing to take out of you. It is not a law enforcement agency. However, we do have people on our 10, it's a 10-member model, continual model, and basically, one of the key persons on that is the police chief of every town. I was encouraged by the police chief from Natick on the recommendation of Jamil. Then I also spoke to the police chief in Franklin, and these two men have urged me to do what I'm doing right now because they said it is a valuable tool for them. And our police chief, Hanlon, is also very, very supportive, so I want to thank them publicly. The Whitman Freedom Team is made up of volunteers and is based on the 10-point communal engagement model that roots pillar and central people in the community as dedicated, it's going to sound corny, but to love, inclusion, and trust. We refer to it as LIT, L-I-T. Our mission and our motto is "Find a Way," and that motto comes from a former student here, JP Dryop. That was his motto. So, the mission of the Whitman Freedom Team is to preserve freedom through unity in the community, and that's what we're talking about. We're talking about people talking together, conversing, sharing differences, learning from each other, and basically being educated in some of the areas that we are weak in. Its members meet monthly to explore ways of offering dialogue and support to individuals in the entire community with the goal of promoting love, inclusion, and trust while moving beyond tolerance to embracing, celebrating, and sharing our community's diversity. It's not enough just to tolerate it. We've got to do better than that, and I think we can. We can be different, but we can work together. The first Freedom Team was formed in 2016, as I said, in Natick by Mr. Adams. Additionally, police chiefs from the two towns that I mentioned came in and impacted not only their Freedom Teams, but impacted me in wanting to go forward. I went forward, almost like the school committee, I had no money. So, but it didn't stop me. I was very blessed to get somebody to pay $2,500 for us to go forward with being a nonprofit. And that is a commitment that I will work hard to make sure that that is worthwhile. We, the Whitman Freedom Team, will assist our community to heal when it's needed. We will be joining a network of other Freedom Teams. There are currently seven. We will be number eight. Last week, I went to a workshop, we have a series of workshops that are presented by each of the different Freedom Teams, and the cost is usually, you know, taken on by that particular chapter. And our meeting last week was attended by 27 people from so many communities, and the topic was how to have a difficult conversation. And in my career, I've had millions, well, not millions, hundreds of difficult conversations, but it's different. You have to be sensitive to some of the issues that I think that are going to be cropping up. And we know, we can see some of the things already in our society that are happening in communities around here, in the state, and nationwide. So, what happens when you make a report to the Freedom Team? The Whitman Freedom Team will offer a safe, private, and respectful space to discuss incidents using transformative justice model. And down below, I've described what transformative justice is. It's a framework for responding to violence, abuse, and harm, and it seeks to respond to violence without creating more violence. In other words, it's not inflammatory, it is a two-way street, two-way communication, and it is intended to educate for the purpose of healing. The Freedom Team stands for inclusion and provides for reconciliation to people who experience threats, harassment, or violence related to race, color, sex, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, age, ethnicity, national origin, religion, disability, or class. To repeat, the Freedom Team is a voluntary and nonpartisan organization. It exists to listen and to facilitate discussions for individuals and groups, encouraging people to be upstanders, not bystanders, and interrupting bigotry, racism, and prejudice wherever it's encountered, preserving freedom through unity and the commitment to gaining a new understanding in the community. The suggested makeup of the Freedom Teams, we basically held by it. Police chief, superintendent of schools, parents, two students so far, Brianna Cudio and Cody Roberts, I hope more can come. That's another thing, I want to thank Nikki for bringing me in contact with these youngsters. They are our future, and today, I think they proved it in their presentation, but also their commitment to making things better for everybody. We also have, we are thinking about getting a lawyer and a clergyman. We don't have them. I've offered it, but they don't want it right now. Local political representatives, we have some people right here from the school committee, several members of your school committee have been asked to help us and they have volunteered to do so. I'm very pleased with that. Social media person, a clinician, a restorative, transformative justice facilitator. So, we have a real cross-section of people, and it's an open membership. You can come to any meetings. We will have our website within a few days. We have already filed for our tax-free IRS tax-free number. We have filed our application for nonprofit status, LTD. Everything takes time. My goal was March 1, I didn't make it. That's all right, we've got plenty of time. Tomorrow will be our first meeting, we will meet at the police station at 6:30, Whitman Police Station. Couple other things. Oh, yeah, we're going to have a hotline telephone number, which will be on our website. Couple of additional remarks that I think is really important. Lit, love, inclusion, and trust is so important. Doesn't mean you're going to be hugging people and everything, but respecting and loving people for what they are and who they are, what culture and what they bring. That's what we're working for. And part of the problem we have today, as you all know that, is that the digital world is dominating communication. Somewhere between 70% to 80% of all our communication is nonverbal. That's it. So, what's happened in that dialogue is you don't get inflection, you don't get feelings, you don't get emotions, you don't get a lot of things. And so, we really got a battle ahead of us. It's ready to listen and to resolve and respond to tough issues such as bias, motivated threats, harassment, violence, bullying. And I say bullying because I think the importance of having somebody like Nikki who could hear us and for Jeff to be involved is a lot of the problems, or some of the problems may come out with young kids being young kids and doing insane things that we can hopefully intervene, bring an understanding and really, not only understanding, but come to a conclusion that, you know, we're all pretty good and we can all get together. So, that's basically what I had to say. If you have any questions, feel free to do it. I just want to say something else. I sat down and I said, it's been 28 years since I've been in Whitman. It seems like yesterday. It really does, and I see one of my students there and I go, oh, I act more than one of them, several of them, but it's nice to be here. I'm dedicated to Whitman. I said to my wife, you know, I'm over the hill, how many more years, I'm going to do something good. So, this is my effort. I hope you enjoy me in this adventure. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred?
Tom, great presentation.
Thank you.
I can only say that the more people and the more resources that are out there in the community, the better we are as a community. To have folks that can relate and perhaps have some professional training in relating to some of the issues of the world today, and to do it as a nonpartisan, nonpolitical, just out of the goodness of a heart and understanding where people are at, is a wonderful thing and a wonderful opportunity. So, I do want to thank you and I very much appreciate it.
Can I piggyback on that for just a second? There are many different groups around who help other different people. It might be the homeless, it might be any kind of situation, and our goal is to try to make ourselves available and also educate. We have some ideas about how we can educate some of the students, and before that ever happens, we're going to offer it to different people. It might be a PTO group, it might be a base through here through the high school, but everything would be offered, I mean, would be bounced off through the superintendent.
But I would think that this could apply to anybody in our community.
Oh, it can.
Not just our school community.
That's correct. That's correct. But they're our basis, our kids are our future, you know that, yes.
Tom, I just want to thank you. You've been a leader in our community for a long, long time in all different roles and capacities, and you've always served as a model for the rest of us to look to. And I really appreciate you being here, I appreciate what you're doing, and I think it's a great idea, and I'm looking forward to being involved. I really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Tom, do you want to note when the first meeting is?
First meeting is tomorrow night, that's February 29, leap day, 6:30 at the Whitman Police Station.
All are welcome, correct?
All are welcome, exactly.
Thank you very much, Tom, for coming.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes. So, January 10, 2024.
Motion to approve as presented.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Abstain? And one abstention. Okay. February 7, 2024.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please? Okay. In unanimous. Okay, next we have the superintendent's report.
So, thank you, Chair. The first is the draft calendar for 2425. You have the draft in front of you. We have an ask from the town of Hanson that I've abided by on one date and not on another at this point, and you can hear me out. There are two elections next year, the state primary is on Tuesday, September 3, and the state presidential election is on Tuesday, November 5. On your calendar, I have marked November 5 as a day off of school. It's a professional half-day for our teachers per contract. I have a day of school right now scheduled for the 3rd because as you see the end date of the calendar, it's June 16. If I take the 3rd off, it pushes up to June 17. And if we have one snow day, our last day of school will be the 20th, and if we have two, we're pushing into the 23rd. So, my recommendation to the committee, after speaking with the principal of the middle school, is to have school for a half-day, as a district half-day on Election Day. We will lock off or cordon off half the middle school with the gate that Bill has there. So, people coming in for an election will come in on the gym side, students will be held and not on that side of the building. It will only impact the kids for four hours that day, or three and a half, we will dismiss at 11:30, so it'll be a half-day. What I don't want to do is call school off for the district that day and push us into a weather issue in the future. But again, this is a draft, if you want, if you feel we should have that day off, I can modify this calendar.
Fred?
I think it's a good idea to do whatever we can to have a regular school session day.
So, on that Friday is a half-day already? I will move that half-day to Tuesday. So, we would go to school, teachers report the Monday, August 26. 27, kids would report on Wednesday, Thursday, full day on Friday. Now, it's scheduled as a half-day, then a half-day on the 3rd. So, the long weekend would go Saturday, Sunday, Labor Day, half-day on
The state primary is on Tuesday, September 3, and the state presidential election is on Tuesday, November 5. On your calendar, I have marked November 5 as a day off of school. It's a professional half-day for our teachers per contract. I have a day of school right now scheduled for the 3rd because, as you see the end date of the calendar, it's June 16. If I take the 3rd off, it pushes up to June 17. And if we have one snow day, our last day of school will be the 20th, and if we have two, we're pushing into the 23rd. So my recommendation to the committee, after speaking with the principal of the middle school, is to have school for a half-day, as a district half-day on Election Day. We will lock off or cordon off half the middle school with the gate that Bill has there. So people coming in for an election will come in on the gym side. Students will be held and not on that side of the building. It will only impact the kids for four hours that day, or three and a half. We will dismiss at 11:30, so it'll be a half-day. What I don't want to do is call school off for the district that day and push us into a weather issue in the future. But again, this is a draft. If you want, if you feel we should have that day off, I can modify this calendar.
Fred?
I think it's a good idea to do whatever we can to have a regular school session day.
So on that Friday is a half-day already? I will move that half-day to Tuesday. So we would go to school, teachers report the Monday, August 26. 27, kids would report on Wednesday, Thursday, full day on Friday. Now it's scheduled as a half-day, then a half-day on the 3rd. So the long weekend would go Saturday, Sunday, Labor Day, half-day on Tuesday. So we just switch a couple of days and go from there.
So I would have two questions. Number one, I believe that we were looking at election days to be professional development. You still able to get that in?
So that, yes, we're fine with that, correct.
Okay. And police and fire over in Hanson, they don't have an issue?
So police has always been there. There's always two officers there. There was some feedback, and the committee received feedback after the last election in Hanson. So this is why I'm bringing this to the committee. I think this is a resolution that will be good for both, and we would ask PD to maybe add another officer. But by putting the gate in between, it will definitely secure that side of the building, and kids will be outside. There might be some traffic patterns, but it will be, students arrive at 7:30, they'll be dismissed at 11, and we have a typical half-day.
So we talked for a couple hours.
Yeah. So this is a draft. I just wanted you to see it, but that's a proposal. I'll give you the final copy at the next meeting, and we'll motion to approve it.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Next up, I have Dr. Jones with his program of studies, and I'm going to ask him to also speak about NIASK while you're up at the podium. Five minutes, Dr. Jones.
Of course, Mr. Simon. The program of studies in front of you, what I'll do is I'll go through and I'll hit the highlights, and I can group some of these things together as the changes that occur just about every single year. One of the biggest changes is that we're removing the student learning expectations from page four of the program of studies because we're adding the Whitman-Hanson vision of the graduate. And the vision of the graduate you can see is right there. It's Whitman-Hanson graduate is an engaged, future-minded individual who has the foundational skills that can be universally applied and adapted for an ever-changing world. One of the reasons we're removing those learning expectations is because with the implementation of the vision of the graduate, they become meaningless. And we're actually in the process right now, which is, I'm going to talk about it in NIASK a little later, we're in the process now of designing the rubrics that will be used to then assign different numbers against the vision of the graduate and student's progression towards achieving that vision of the graduate. So we'll add those once we get those rubrics settled and looked at. The next piece is, you'll see that the innovation career pathways is now being entered into the program of studies. We are just, or we're halfway through our first year with this program, and it's going strong, so we're putting it in the program of studies now. Number four is updated graduation requirements. We have the financial literacy as we've always had, but you'll notice arts is the second one down. Arts will now become a graduation requirement, a class in the arts, the fine arts or the practical arts. What we're finding is that there are some states, most notably California, that will not accept an application from a student for college if they do not have an art under their belt. And so this is more of helping our students be prepared for the next step once they leave high school. We removed a tech credit to squeeze that one in, to put the art one in. With the amount of tech that students are using now, they are using tech at a rate more than one of our courses would actually teach them how to use tech because it's being integrated into the classrooms. Number five, you'll see removed from all the courses, and the old program of studies at the base of each course, it said this course addresses Whitman-Hanson Student Learning Expectations 1 through 6, and instead, we're going to include, this course fulfills the expectations of the Whitman-Hanson Regional High School's Vision of the Graduate. So it's just a semantics piece to make sure that everything's in line. Now, if you look at number six, number seven, 15, 16, 17, 19, and 20, those are all courses being removed from the program of studies due to lack of interest, lack of enrollment over a number of years. And so there's no sense in continuing to have them in the program of studies when we can move those out and begin to look at newer, more relevant electives that the students will be more interested in participating in. Number eight, banned, going back to number eight, banned is going to be a full-year course that bears four credits moving forward instead of a semester course.
Chris, let me just stop you. We don't have your changes. We just have the program.
You should have all the changes sent up.
I just don't, we don't have a listing of all the changes. We just have the program. So.
We just have this.
So.
Do you want to get a memo with it?
No. So.
Awesome. You want to move to the bottom of the agenda, and I'll go make copies?
It's up to you.
Yeah, if you want to go make copies when you come back.
I apologize for that. You, okay.
When you come back, we'll insert you in.
All right, or I'll wait till the end. I don't mind getting back at the end of the line for a mistake.
No, that's okay, because we.
Would you like to go to NIASK and I'll make the copies?
Yeah, we could do that. We could do that.
Thank you, George.
It'll have some of my scribbles on it, but nothing too.
Not just the pretty face up there.
All right, so NIASK then.
So let's move over to NIASK. An update on the NIASK visit, we have our decennial visit coming up. We had the collaborative conference. And now what happens is at the collaborative conference, they identified a couple of areas that we needed to improve in that we found we agreed with. We do an extensive self-study, identify some areas that we think we need to improve on against their standards. They sent their team, they checked us out for three days, and we found that we all agreed. So taking those recommendations and moving forward over the past year and a half, we've been working on those and we've shored those up. We met with the chair and the vice chair of the visiting team that's coming at the end of April to discuss this with them, and they're very happy with the progress they've seen. So another team will come and visit, and they'll visit us for three days. Part of that visit is visiting with the school committee. They are very flexible with how they do that. They said they can do it in-person or virtual, but they're looking for Monday or Tuesday, and I'll check the exact date. They're looking for a Monday or Tuesday, realizing that many of you work. They said they're available to do it virtually if that's the easiest thing for you to do. So they're looking at the 29th or 30th of April to meet with you. I don't need a date now, but as long as you let me know, we can set that up and put that in a schedule that we need to compile and give to them probably about a week before they arrive.
Okay, Chris, does it, they want the whole committee?
They would like to meet with the whole committee.
They do? The whole committee at that point in time?
Yep. And they'll just ask you various questions about the school, about things you've seen and your thoughts. It's not a huge in-depth interview. My assumption is it lasts about an hour. That's what typically occurs. I can get more details if you want. I don't know if you require questions from them. If that's your wish, I can always ask. They're pretty flexible.
Okay. All right, we'll have to discuss that and figure out and let you know.
Sure. And like I said, it's, we have to submit all our materials in about three weeks to make sure that they get everything they can read through, to make sure what they're looking at when they come. They come and do a whole visit. We set up with students, they visit classrooms. But their visit with you that Monday or Tuesday night doesn't have to be inserted into the agenda we give them until probably four days before they arrive.
Well, we can do that ahead of time, so that shouldn't be an issue. Yes, Fred?
I don't know if that's a break from their normal protocol, but I know the last time they broke us out into smaller groups, and it was whoever could make it. You know, you gave a list of a couple of different dates and whatnot, and if that would still be available.
I think it, well, from what I understand, that's not still available. I think when you're looking at the old protocol, it's a different process that they use. And then I think there's variables between the chair, and what the chair decides they're going to accept or not accept. But the new process they have is streamlined as far as the visit onsite, and so they try and put everything in at once. Like they were meeting with large groups of students when they came. This is now a decennial visit where they had a collaborative conference before, so they've inserted another meeting. So there's a lot of variables is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you.
I can ask though if that's something the committee would be interested in.
That's okay. All right, thanks, Chris. We'll get back to you on that.
I'm sorry, Chris, who, I'm sorry, who are they? Who?
NIASK, the New England Association of School Accreditation. So what they do is every 10 years, they come in and evaluate the school, and they accredit us. They either say we're up to snuff, so to speak, or we're not. And if we're not, this new system, what they do, it's not a judgment on yes or no, it's they look at you, have this visit that we had 18 months ago, and they said, "Okay, here are the areas that we have for standards. Here's where you rate on the standards, and then here's where we'd like to see you move forward." And it's directly tied to our school improvement plan, which is under the district strategic plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And they have modified since 2012 when we were here.
Quite a bit.
And it was much more invasive, and it's a good process. It's a good self-reflecting process, but I think the new standards and the new way they go about this is more beneficial for the district and for the school. It's cost less, too. So it's a benefit.
It costs less, it's broken up, still quite a bit of paperwork, but what it is, is it's not an extra step. We use it anyways, and it's a very deep self-reflection through surveys and looking at our things. And it's not the old NIASK where because it was a yes or no, you would scramble to get things and put things together. This new NIASK, you look at what you have and you give it to them, and you either make some things or you don't, but it's not, you're not going to get sanctioned or anything. They say you need to improve on this. Two of our major, well, our only two major areas were curriculum in a common format, which we've rectified. We used our Panther releases this year to do that. And the other one was the vision of the graduate because we had it in pieces. We didn't put it in a formal format and formally accept it until now, and so we're ready to go.
All right, we have your, we have your corrections, so.
Okay. Is that cutting my five minutes still?
Go for it.
Go for it.
Any questions on the ASK?
No.
Okay. The program of studies were, I went down to about six, and then I started talking about removing those courses. If you look at six, seven, 15, 16, 17, 19, and 20, we're removing those because of not having enough students sign up for them for a number of years, and so there's a lack of interest, so we'd rather get those out of the way and start creating new courses that generate more student interest. If you look at number eight, banned will now become a full-year course, carrying four credits instead of a semester course. Number nine, and this is another one where I can name a bunch of them, number nine, 11, 12, 13, and 18, they're all not being offered, they're not running next year. And that's because we alternate electives to make sure that there is a variety of choices for students to select from. We can't run all of our electives at once for, one, staffing, and two, for a number of students that would take all of them if we offered them all at once. Number 10, we added to the course Art of Mindfulness, a prerequisite. You'll notice that wherever we have prerequisite in the program of studies, we're not looking to exclude, we're looking to include, but what we do for that prerequisite is say it is strongly recommended, the course that you should have taken before, so you can, you have the best chance for success in that course. That doesn't always mean that you cannot take that course. We look at students individually when that comes up. Number 14, hospitality marketing has been named to just hospitality because of a change in the curriculum in that. And then when we start looking at 21 and below, this is where our career innovation, our innovation career pathways comes in. So number 21, we added that to explain innovation career pathways, and then as we go down, we talk about the specific courses that are there for the specific pathways. So in our healthcare and socialist assistance pathway, the first course ninth graders are going to take when they come in is Introduction to Health Sciences. And then they move on to medical interventions, and the reason that you'll see is in grade 11 is because of it pairs nicely with AP Biology and the chemistry makeup for students to take that when they're in the medical pathway. Anatomy and Physiology, that's under there, although it's a course that other students take as well, that's grade 11 or 12. The next one, business and finance-specific courses, you'll see Introduction to Business in grade nine, so ninth graders that come in, take a full-year course, Introduction to Business. Grade 10, they go into marketing. Grade 11, they go into money management. And then the internship pieces for both pathways, any student in any pathway, their senior year have to complete a 100-hour in-depth internship with a business in the area. That's not filing, that's not cleaning, that's making sure that you're utilizing your skills and the certifications that you're getting as you matriculate through the school for when you graduate. Moving on to the next section, it restarts at 1. Banned has been renamed to Concert Band, and again, it's a full-year course. Chorus has been renamed to Concert Chorus, and it's not a semester course anymore, it's a full-year course. And then for 3, 4, 5, and 6, moving forward, you'll notice that Guitar has been broken into four levels. You're going to notice this with another set of courses as well. What that does is by doing that, it offers more students able to take those courses and receive the support they need and the challenge that they need if they're skilled in that area. And so by doing that, we're able to pay more attention to those students going either way, whether they need more support, which will actually attract more students because there's not the fear that they're going to be so far behind or fall behind. 7 and 8, we're removing those, and you'll notice that we have Pop Rock Ensemble, we did the same thing that we did with Guitar, we broke it into the different levels. And then you'll notice the addition of another course, which is History of American Modern Music in music. Number 10, Psychology, we've changed from a year course to a semester course. We believe that by running Psychology's semester course, we can offer it to more students on a semester basis where it will fit into their classes. There was a concern, the most questions I've received about this is AP Psychology. AP Psychology is still an advanced placement course that runs a year. So just your normal psychology is going to run a semester, AP Psychology is going to run a full year. Moving on to the next section. If you look at 1, 2, and 3, there's a change in our physical education area again. This past year, we grouped them into Phys Ed and Health, taking them at the same time and blocked them between ninth and 10th grade. One of the reasons we did that is so we could free up an extra block for freshmen by combining those two, so that all freshmen coming into the high school for a softer start would receive a seminar, which is basically a directed study hall. We don't need that space now because we're looking at the change in schedule where they have that extra space with the eighth period we're talking about putting in. So we then have split that up again to offer more seats to students in either one of those or both of those, and Health will still be with ninth graders. And then that automatically makes, if you look at the following classes have been added, number four, that's all the old language that we had, we just reverted back to it because we're going right back to what we were not last year but the year before, ending with Health. Questions?
So first, I want to commend Whitman-Hanson for their financial literacy as being a requirement. On the news, maybe a couple of weeks ago, there was a, they did a little study and found that other states require it, and Massachusetts is one that does not. And there were, I think, seven districts that actually required as a graduation, and there was Whitman-Hanson's name right on the TV. So that was really nice to see, and I went, "Oh, my gosh, Whitman-Hanson, yay, we require something." So kudos to us for requiring that because it looks like that's probably going to come into play as a requirement for everyone eventually, but we're already ahead of the pack. So that's, I just want to say kudos for that. Yes, Fred?
Quick question. If we can go back to number one, or you block one, number 18?
Yep.
Courses run every other year. The Vietnam Conflict, World War I, and September 11, the War on Terror. Those aren't canceled at all. They're just not going to be in the curriculum this year, but they'll be back the following year.
Correct. Students won't be offered that class this coming year. The following year, we look at it again and offer them to keep the electives fresh for students.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? All right, thank you very much, Chris. Oh, we need your motion to accept.
Second?
Okay.
And Chris did have this run by a school council and approved.
All right, all in favor, please? Hands. It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
You're all set.
Thank you so much.
Just a quick update, the girls are winning at this point with four minutes to play in the third quarter. 40 to 27, they're down the hall, first round of the tournament, 40 to 27. I'll keep you updated.
Okay. Okay. Next, we have, we're going to have business update.
Yep.
But, John, you can come up, but.
Starting with the budget. Let John do the.
Okay. Well, he's just going to, I'm just going to have to see if anybody has any questions.
Yeah, pretty much. So, John, you can.
Just, I think if anybody has looked at it, if you have any questions, we're not going to make John come up here every time and go through every page. If you have questions, after looking at these, you're welcome, if you have any right now, to ask John. But if not, he will take the questions you can ask through me, or we can do it at the next meeting also. It's the way it used to be, that we didn't have to have John up here for an hour to explain everything that he puts forth, as usual, and a nice job for us.
Do you have any questions? Did you want to just mention E and D? I know that was something that you wanted to mention.
Yeah, so, and you've got 17 documents related to the balance sheet and the E and D, and we'll go through them all, but on February 16th, the Department of Revenue certified our, our E and D, and this is the, what I submitted to them in order to do that. If you go to document five, very quickly, very quickly, it's their, their sheet of where the number comes from. And the amount is $767,148 for fiscal year '23. I can.
Thank you.
I can go all night.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Yep. Okay. So, the next is still with Jeff, but I'm going to insert something before the budget questions. I want to address something that has been in the paper and on Facebook, and that is about the question of a school override. I want people to know, the public to know that, we, the school committee has not had anything to do with that request, nor have we approved that, because we haven't even given our assessment yet. The figures that Jeff had given before were based on just broad numbers that they had. If anybody knows the budget process, we go through a lot of steps. And we look at things like enrollment, class size, budgetary, all different things. But, we haven't finished with that yet. So, we haven't done our assessment. So it's very difficult for us when we look at the comments that people are making. We're not done, and I want the public to know that. You know, we tweak things, we go back and forth. And honestly, I think a lot of us here, they're kind of leery about a school override, because that's fine for this year, if school gets the money, but next year, that doesn't happen. It goes into the general fund. And we might not get any of that money or see any of the benefit the next year. So I want to just caution everybody that we have had no conversation with either town about an override. It has not happened yet. And we're still looking, there's a lot of factors that impact the assessment, but not services to the students of the district. We do not want to impact the services that the students already have, and the students, the services that we were able to get through ESAR, that have shown the positive impact it has had on the students and the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District. And a couple of people have even put, oh yeah, it's for the best of the district, kind of like sarcastically, for best of the students. Well, all 10 members of this committee and the administration try every day to do what's best for the students. And I can speak for everybody on this committee. We don't do things willy-nilly, everything is with great thought, and hopefully with cooperation and coordination with the two towns. We are not there yet, we are working on it. We will submit our assessment when it comes necessary, and if we have to have more conversations with the towns, we will. But I just want that out there, that it was not our purview, so people are getting misunderstood that saying that we're asking for it. We have not. It's not, this is not a debatable issue. This is just a comment from the chair. And to know that we work very hard, no, Fred, I'm not, no debate. That this is how it's going to be, and we're still working on it. We haven't voted a thing yet. Okay? I thank you, and now it's your turn.
Sure, thanks. So, I was able to, I was invited to the Whitman Department Head meeting, Thursday prior to break. It was a very good meeting with Mary Beth and all the other department heads, and Mary Beth shared the Whitman Town budget with a 5% assessment to the Regional School District, and it seems like Whitman still has some issues around their budget. So, being transparent, I will ask Mary Beth if I could share that budget with you folks. It was just given to the department head, so I don't want to overstep. I also received the budget from Hanson. Ms. Green did include our ask of a 5% increase, overall increase of the budget, and that was placed in the Hanson budget. And I will ask her the same, so you folks can see what both budgets look like as we move forward for our next meeting. As I presented to the committee and to the, into the community, to be level service, we need a 5% increase of our overall budget. And then I gave you a 4% increase, a 3% increase, and a 2% increase. That 2% increase takes into account what both towns have pretty much earmarked for us, without substantial change to their own budgets. I will sit here as a superintendent and say, I don't know who can survive with a 2% increase of their budget. I know my colleagues can't, and I will say that they will have significant impact to our staffing and our student service delivery within this district. George and Nikki, and I know Nikki's getting a lot of props tonight, and well deserved, because she came in onboard and looked at what the state requires us to do for our kids. And that look, that MTSS service and equity service for all kids, Mr. Evans, is what we put in place because of the funding we received from, from the Fed. And I think, again, I'm going to toot our horn, we used ESAR funds effectively, and we knew there was going to be a cliff or a fallout. $800,000 out of 4-point-something million is the only piece that we're looking for now. And if we reduce that, we will impact what we have. George and Nikki will present at our, our next committee meeting, at our secondary evaluation or our benchmark. You have seen growth from our kids. And I know our, our middle school kids are struggling a little bit with win, but you are seeing this curve that, an achievement that we haven't seen prior to ever, that I've been able to talk about in this district as far as kids making gains. We've always been in the middle. And I think when George and I took, took this, you know, these positions, we were content to be marginal. And that's what we said. We, we're marginal, we're right in the middle. Well, our kids are making gains, and it's because of the interventions that we put in place, and the fact that both towns have supported our budgets to make sure our class sizes are, are adequate. I spoke to some teachers before, the class size used to be 25 in elementary. We're at 20. You know, there's a little blobble here of 21, 22. And, we have interventionists in place, at the building level and at the, at the, at the district level, to look at data and really drill down to each and every student's skill base. So I am still at the point to the committee, listen, we need 5% to provide those services. However, I have some flexibility potentially, as we move forward, if you don't want to replace people that retire. If you don't want to replace people that leave. That will bring that budget down, however, we might not be able to offer some classes at the high school. Most of my retirements this year at the high school. We have a total of five. If I don't replace those retirements, that brings down that ask in the budget, 3, 4, $100,000. We haven't used any E and D in this budget, we always never want to use that. But, we could potentially come down, if the committee so dictates to me, or recommends to me, where you're comfortable at. I'm comfortable at 5. That means we don't lose any program, we don't lose any students. If those teachers retire, I can probably still hire somebody a little cheaper, maybe that lowers the assessment as we move forward. I don't know that yet. I also haven't committed any E and D or extra circuit breaker money. So I'm still at a 5. Could I live with a 3 and 1/2 or a 4? Maybe. But you will see loss of staff. We went through this budget already and curtailed everything or trimmed everything as far as non-people. So this is a bare-bones type of facilities, it's a 1% increase, there's no more flexibility there. So again, as Beth had said, we haven't issued an assessment yet. But the assessment that I'm, I'm provided for, really right now earmarked in both towns, is a 2% increase of the overall budget. I remember sitting with this committee a couple of years ago, and even when we had budget subcommittee, we talked about, the school should be getting a 3% increase of the overall budget, right? Fourth, 3%. So 3%, we're not there with the assessments of town, and I, I wanted to not extend with Senator Brady or Rep. Sullivan. We got 105 or 110,000 more in Chapter 70. 115, John? What do we, 100,000 plus. It wasn't a half a million dollars. You know, so, the, the state gives us a pot of money, Chapter 70, we get 100,000 more. Our budget goes up here, so the assessment to the town has to go up here. Because my budget went up more than 100,000. We, the, there's not an equal. We've relied on the state a lot in Chapter 70, it used to be 50%. We're lower, lower than 50% in Chapter 70. And, the burden is now falling on the taxpayers in both communities. The state is not adding. And even if they add another 30 dollars per child, like they did last year, that's just another 100,000. If I'm at a 5% increase right now, with what the towns are asking me for, remember, folks, it's like 1.8 million in cuts. It's just not equitable. So we have some things to work on, and I'm asking the committee to think about, what assessment or what number as a percentage you would like us to work on. I'm here, I can give you scenarios at what that looks like, at 5 with no cuts, at 4% increase, at this, what's that going to cut? At 3, and at 2. At 2, I'm telling you right now, as is, it's significant. I have nowhere to cut but people at 1.8 million. If it goes down as we project forward, it's, it's less folks, it's less services, it's some of the, of what we built will have to be revised. If the committee wants to increase class size and keep, we're, we're committed to our interventionists, because I think that's working. If, if the committee says this is where we want you to be, it's going to come from class sizes, you're going to, we're going to work with parents to say, class size used to be 19 or 20, now it's 25. Back to where, where it was. However, we will have those interventionists in place to work with students, but the class sizes will be different. If I eliminate retirees, what Dr. Jones just spoke about, those high school class sizes will be, will be increased, or classes may not run. We're not at that decision piece, we're at Budget 2 meeting, we're used to six or seven of these. But I just wanted to lay it out, I'm, I think we put forth a very straightforward budget. Can there be areas, if I don't replace, and because of enrollment, and Beth and I have talked about this, we can look at that, but it will affect class size. Don't get me wrong, it will affect class size or opportunities for kids to take classes. And, and again, any questions that the gallery has, or the public has, email Beth, email me, we will answer those questions. Mr. Kane had some questions, we emailed Mr. Kane, we put his questions out on the website. I want to be as transparent with questions that come in. The committee has asked questions, we answer that to the full committee, and we put those questions on the website. We don't want duplication of questions, that's why we, we post them. But if people have questions about that, all the budget docs, the 42 pages that John has explaining the budget are out on the website. But it, it's as is, this is what we have, and I know we have a revenue problem, and I know Mr. Small talks about that revenue problem. We have a revenue problem in both communities. But I don't know, it's, the, the school's not the only issue with revenue in both communities. I think both budgets have revenue issues, and what Beth said, it's just not a school issue. I will support, wherever the towns are, in helping to resolve those issues. But this isn't a school-only problem. And ESAR created a small piece of this. George and I went through this budget, last year we took 500,000 of E and D, and we, and we're short 800 in ESAR. That's 1.3 million. At 5%, or, or even what the towns are offering me, I'm still 500,000 short. I'd still be cutting what the towns are, what the towns would be willing to offer me. If I cut 1.3 off of that 1.8, I'm still short. So the, the funding from the communities isn't meeting the needs of the school. Take away ESAR, take away E and D from last year, as it, because as we said, it's one-time money. I'm still short in what's being proposed by the towns to support the Regional School District. I'm still asking for that 1.8.
So, we have a long way to go, and we have time. So, we'll be having more discussions about what works. You know, if we have to increase class sizes from, some are 19, if we have to go to 22 or 23, and they have interventionists, and they have aides, is that, is that as bad?
Does the state mandate how many students in a class?
No.
Okay.
The recommended guideline is no more than 25.
Okay.
And we've talked about that with our association. The one thing too, then, and you know, and I'll email Mr. Brady, Senator Brady, and Rep. Financially, we're supporting an EL program, or EL students, that we didn't have. We've added five teachers in three years. And we don't qualify for grants. We're not there yet. So, it's on the burden of the Regional School District and the taxpayers of both communities to pay for those teachers because of the services our neediest kids need. We do that for special education, we do that for English language learners as required by the state. But that has had that impact on the budget, that's underfunded, and it's not really a mandate. It's a recommend, it's required, but it's not a funded mandate outside of that, unless you can apply for a grant, and we're not at the number of students that apply for a grant. So we're kind of in the middle of this chasm that we're supporting the students, because it's the right thing to do, we're required to support them, but nobody's helping us do that.
And what's important, that everybody, when I retired in 2019, I believe we had two and a half teachers.
Yes.
For the whole district. Okay? And as Jeff said, he just had to hire five more this year.
Over the past two years.
Over the past two years. So, you know, the increase in number of students of English language learners, that we are required to help, and they have to have a, a teacher and/or tutor, and also they have to have a classroom, where they meet with this teacher or tutor during the day, when they're not in a regular class. So that was another issue that we talked about, about the necessary classroom space that these hits in. Of course, it depends on how many students there are. Duval has the most, and then.
And then Whitman.
And Whitman Middle. And of course, that'll just come up. Of course, they could, well, it used to be called FLEP out, I don't know what it's called now, when they got better at the language, they could go, you know.
We reduce services.
Yeah.
But right now, most of our services are in the elementary school. The other piece is special education, this just came across my desk today, not an impact of the budget yet, but our preschool. So, our preschool is booming with evaluations. So, any three- or four-year-old student, young person in, in town, can be evaluated for special education in preschool. We only have a certain amount of slots in preschool, however, if they qualify, by law, we have to service those students. Now, it could be a half-day, it could be two days a week, or it could be five full days. And, I was told today that we've received more evaluations than we've ever had, the request for evaluations, and we might need to add a staff member for next year, just in special education in the preschool, because of the high needs, and they're, they're special education with extremely high needs. We've had to add a teacher this year to break up our high-needs preschool class of three and four-year-olds, because it was bursting. So that's another requirement, that's not necessarily funded by the, the state, but it's a mandate that we service our kids. And we think about K to 12, but remember, we service 3 to 5 in preschool, and 18 to 22 in our post-grad programs. So we really service students on, on special education from age 3 to age 22. We don't talk about that a whole lot, and people tend to forget, our high-needs preschool, and we take the highest needs within, within both communities. So, and, and we're bursting there as well. So, these are all the pieces that come into the budget, not just your traditional first-grade class size of 20. This is where we had some of our students in K who are, and again, thank you for, for full day, because we've seen a difference in, in student behavior and student success academically because of the full day in year two of kindergarten. Our neediest students come from preschool into our kindergarten, into our first grade, where they need supports as well in special education and their, in regular education. So, there's a lot that encumbers this budget as we move forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we did the NIESC, vehicles, surplus.
Yep. So, you have in your, in your packet a note, your request from, from Mike Driscoll, the facilities coordinator, to surplus two of our vehicles that are shot. We just need a, a recommendation or a vote that we can declare them surplus and go forward with them.
Motion to declare the two vehicles a surplus as requested?
Second.
Any questions? Okay, all in favor? Steve? Okay, unanimous.
And then, you're skipping over new business.
Yep. New business, we're passing over, because this was Dawn's request, that she wanted to ask for some information in the public. So we're passing over. Next meeting dates. We are, our Regal School Committee will be March 13th, and budget also, and a vote on the budget assessment will be March 20th. If we have to have any meeting in between, after everybody is going through everything and all the budget and the assessment, we will do so. But, right now, that's what is scheduled. Okay? So make sure you've written it down, the 13th and the 20th. We decide, originally it was going to be the 6th, but in discussing it with Jeff, where last week was, was school vacation. in discussing it with Jeff, where last week was school vacation, I personally thought it would be better for time, time-wise, for the administration to be able to work on the budget, to give them the extra time. To have another meeting next week was very tight. So, this way, it gives them a couple of weeks versus one week. Okay? So, that's the reasoning for that. Okay, so, public comment. I have on the list, Rosemary, you wanted to come up?
Did you, did you someone report in?
Excuse me?
Just Katie.
No, there's you and Sean. All right, Sean?
Sean Kane, 31 Forest Street. Just something quickly. If you have a chance, I'd watch the Hanson Board of Selectmen meeting last night. They went through, and they, I think they did a pretty good job laying out their financial picture, and they talked a little bit about the budget. So, I think it'd give you some good perspective from where they're coming from. Also, at the end of that discussion, Ms. Cameron did ask, or she was, she was thinking about bringing us all together, maybe the Whitman Board of Selectmen, the Hanson Board of Selectmen, and the school committee, so that we could have some of these discussions. Instead, I threw meetings at a distance, but together firsthand and really work through some of these difficult conversations. So, if I, like I said, if you have some time, maybe skim through that meeting or watch that specific part of the meeting. I think it'll be valuable for you, and then consider that invitation.
Laura called me today and extended, but she hadn't talked to Carl yet, so, and I haven't discussed it with the committee yet.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes, Steve?
Sean, you did a fabulous job, at least what I read in the Express. You know, you're calm, you hold a certain demeanor, you, and this is what I've known about you the whole time I've known you. You're just, you're perfect. You'd be a perfect person for the Mr. Evans group. I mean, it really hit the right tone in the way you say it. So, it's very appreciative.
Oh, thank you.
Every time you move something forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Rosemary?
Thank you so much. It's a tough time. This is Rosemary Conley, 405 Franklin. This is a big job you guys do. You take half, more than half of a regional budget. The standard of thumb for finances is 40% aid, 60% revenue. But I wanted to address the oddest of the problem. Year after year, even when we were at the bottom, third bottom funding in Massachusetts for education, people from the town screamed, people, leaders in the town screamed, "Our kids cost too much. We can't handle our kids," and nobody looked at revenue. Nobody did. How is the revenue being used, and what is revenue? Keep in mind, revenue is defined as not only what we raise in taxation, but also what we take in from aid. The lowest amount recommended is 10% aid, and the high end is 75% state, federal aid. Hanson took in 4%. Whitman took in 7%. Maybe the kids aren't our problem. Maybe the funding and asking for funding from the state and federal government for proper support of our citizens is the problem. And I would tell the people asking the schools, again, to do an override, to take a look at themselves and what they're supposed to be doing to support the taxpayers. Thank you so much for what you do. You are on an uphill climb. You are fighting for the kids and doing the right things, and this has helped us climb out of declining enrollment, which is hold harmless, because you're providing a product that people want through proper fund, starting to move into proper funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. Okay.
Go to executive session.
Yep. Okay, so, we do have executive session, so that's the end of coming.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Okay, Fred?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Steve? Steve? Myself? Yes? We're going to executive session.